We're going to reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, November 12th. Do we have anything to report out?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn this special meeting and adjourn the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, November 12th. The clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
And Howell?
Yes, and if you will all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an agenda update, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. With your permission, staff would like to request items eight and nine on tonight's agenda be reversed so that item nine, it is the joint city council and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting is called before item eight. Also, staff received correspondences regarding items seven C and nine B yesterday. Staff has also prepared an update to the staff report for item nine B. Copies of the correspondences and the updated staff report have been provided to you, and they are also available at the table in the back.
Okay, I'm sorry, Steve, could you repeat what the other item in consent that was?
Item seven C and nine B. Item seven C is the only item.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have one request to speak in business from the floor, and that is Keon. And for those of you that are interested, business from the floor is anybody that would like to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Given that I'm under a time constraint, I'm going to need to speak very quickly to get through all this, so I hope you can bear with me. My name's Keon Farugi. My family moved here in 1999. I went to San Jose Galardo Elementary and was part of the first graduating class there. I went to Sutter Middle School and Folsom High School. Thereafter, I went to Folsom Lake College and transferred to Sacramento State University, where I graduated in 2016 with summa cum laude honors, earning degrees in computer science and mathematics. Not only am I a product of this great city, but it's a town I love dearly. This year, my fiance and I purchased a lot in the Lakeview Oaks community, and we're currently in the final stages of the planning process. Now that you know a little bit more about me, let's cut right to the chase. I have issues with the proposal to update the tree ordinance. Much of the presentation made to the council last meeting was focused on the in-lu fee quote-unquote loophole. This in-lu fee for trees within the building footprint was designed to keep building homes in Folsom affordable and has allowed lot owners for the last two decades to build their homes without worrying too much about the oak trees on the property. There were comments stating that lot owners tend to move the house slightly to avoid a hefty fee, and even a suggestion was made to move the house back and to pay a little bit more. Now, let me ask you, as taxpayers, have you ever filed your taxes with the intent of paying a single dollar more than you absolutely had to? In essence, these tree mitigation fees are taxes, and any increase must be strongly analyzed and properly vetted. After all, these lots were approved for single home residences. My biggest issue with the new tree proposal is the proposed change in how in-lu mitigation fees are calculated for trees within the building footprint. At the last meeting, the mayor mentioned that we must think about the unintended consequences of this proposal. The unintended consequences of the proposal is a drastic change in the value of the lots. Let's take an extreme case as an example to demonstrate how the new proposal is pretty unfair to lot owners. Let's assume a lot exists with 10 massive trees right in the middle, exactly where you would expect the home to be built. The current lot owner would pay $1,000, $100 for each of those trees. Again, these in-lu fees were designed to allow for lot owners to be able to afford building on the property they own, and it currently does exactly that. Under the new tree ordinance proposal, the owner of the same lot would be expected to pay $30,000. This is a 3,000% increase, a 3,000% increase in taxes on a lot the owner had already purchased with the mindset that trees on the building footprint would not drastically impact the cost to build the home. Such a drastic change would not only impact the affordability of building a home on the property, but it would impact the resale value of that property. As I read the proposed tree ordinance update and listened to the presentation made by the Arborist Department, it was utterly clear that the perspective of current lot owners was not taken into account. These mitigation fees are taxes, and the people most greatly impacted will be the ones that are paying for these taxes, which are current lot owners. Much like the water increased mailers that were sent out, current lot owners deserve to be made aware of such a drastic change to the price structure of tree mitigation fees. I only found out about this because the arborists I hired let me know that this was in plan for the city. Unless any of you are currently lot owners, given the information currently on the table, this smells like taxation without representation. My recommendation is to, without question, first and foremost, send out mailers to let all lot owners know what's going on. Secondly, I'd recommend some type of grandfather clause be installed so that current lot owners have at least a couple of years to plan for their home and pay for tree mitigation under the current ordinance. Even with a grandfather clause, it must be noted that the inherent value of these lots will change if and when such a change to the ordinance update is approved. I hope you take my comments into consideration and think about the perspective of current lot owners as you make this decision to potentially update the tree ordinance and inherently change the value of lots in this great city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have no other requests on business from the floor, so we will move to schedule presentations. And the first is a proclamation relative to Small Business Saturday, so Judy Collinsworth and any of the folks that are supposed to be involved in this come on down. I think I see several of our Sutter Street friends. Run over. I promise not to bite. Okay, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming November 30th, 2019, a Small Business Saturday in the city of Folsom. Whereas the city of Folsom celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, excuse me, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the U.S., are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the U.S., and whereas 94% of consumers in the U.S. value the contribution small businesses make in their community, I don't know what the other 6% are doing, but whereas 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their businesses stand out during the busy holiday shopping season, and whereas 59% of small business owners and Small Business Saturday contribute significantly to their holiday sales each year, whereas the city of Folsom supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Kerry Howell, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, a Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Proclaim this 12th day of November, 2019.
Yay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And while we have a gentleman, I'll see you are in your business.
I'll start. I'm Jim Betzger. I own Dorothea's Shop, that I own at the Christmas store on the corner of Southern Wolf.
I'm Judy Collinsworth. I'm the FHDA Folsom Historic District Association District Manager, District Director.
Executive Director.
Thank you.
And I'm Karen Holmes from Karen's Bakery Cafe.
I'm Rosari Redries from Sutter Street Cafaria.
I'm Mark Dass, political asset. Michelle Lars, gas line.
Thank you guys for being here, and I encourage everybody to support these small businesses Thanksgiving weekend. Ice Skating Rink will be open. You can stop in and get your Christmas ornaments, stop in for some lunch, get a beer. There's a lot of stuff you can do, and don't forget to go to Karen's for breakfast on the way.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And our next item is a scheduled presentation regarding the impacts of residential organics recycling mandated by SB 1383.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Dave Nugent, Public Works Department. So tonight, we're here for just an overview of what we've known has been coming under SB 1383. We're going to just give you an overview, hit some of the high points, and share with you what we do know, and maybe share a little bit of what we think is coming, but we just don't know what some of those answers are yet. With me tonight is Marie McKee, our General Services Manager, who oversees our Solid Waste Department, as well as Mark Rappaport, our environmental specialist supervisor. Cannot say that, tongue-tied tonight. So let me get started here. So the presentation tonight, excuse me, will give a background of, like I said, a background of the legislation, its requirements and timeline for implementation, the description of the process the city is currently going through to secure capacity, as well as address the requirements of the impact this law will have. So here's a brief overview. The law was passed by the state legislature and signed into law in 2016, and is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the past 30 years. SB 1383 requires the statewide reduction of organic waste disposal by 75% by the year 2025, which is approximately 20 million tons of waste annually. The law also requires the state to increase something new here, edible food recovery by 20% by the year 2025.
Dave, can you define what edible food recovery means?
Yeah, I'll get into it a little bit more as I go through the presentation. I want to just kind of let it go, and I'll address it as I go along. This has significant policy and legal implications for the state and local governments. So what is different about SB, I'm just going to say the law, if that's all right, instead of keep saying them all over. What's different about the law is it establishes a statewide target. And our current legislation under AB 939, which is our kind of our recycling law, it mandates targets specific for jurisdictions, so we have to hit a target. This law does not do that. It sets a statewide target, and basically you have to go through a prescriptive measures in order to meet those goals. So we won't be under a specific target reduction here in Folsom, but it's statewide, so we still have to follow all the things that everybody else is doing throughout the state. So it's a prescriptive regulation. So when talking about organic food waste for purposes of this law, we're talking about green waste, wood waste, food waste, but also fibers such as food-soiled paper, clean paper, and cardboard. Organic waste comprises 2/3 of our waste stream. Food waste alone is the largest waste stream in California at 18%. So here in Folsom, we generate about 9,000 tons per year of green and wood waste, and we estimate we will be generating approximately 1,500 tons of food waste in Folsom.
Are we just basing that on these statistics that come from elsewhere?
We're basing it on industry standards where other jurisdictions are currently doing, and they kind of come up with a per capita food generation or food waste generation, how much people generate in food waste, and we've applied it to Folsom. And again, those are one of the things we just don't know yet. How much are we going to generate?
Okay.
But I would say people generate what they generate, and it's not probably going to change too much. You can't really reduce your use of food. I mean, it's kind of a standard number, and if we get into the details, I'm sure Mark would have specific examples.
Well, it's not about the food you use, it's about the food you don't use.
Correct. Did you have a question?
Oh, I'll let you continue.
So why the law? Why did they come into this? It really centers around the global warming aspect of what's going on, and specifically, this is, the law itself is called Short-Lived Climate Pollutants: Organic Waste Methane Emissions Reductions. So it's all about eliminating methane out of the atmosphere. So landfilling, organic waste leads to anaerobic breakdown, creates methane. Landfills are responsible for 21% of the state's methane emissions. Landfills are the third-largest producer of methane, and methane is 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide over a 20-year horizon, which, that's pretty significant if you really stop and think about it, that's a lot. So by reducing our organics out of our landfill, we'll also be reducing or will be improving the air quality in our region and specifically around landfills. Some of the pollutants are also the NOx, the NOx's, as well as particulate matter in the landfill areas. The implementation dates and milestones that was created under SB 1383 was, as I said, it was signed into law in September of 2016. For the past couple of years, they've been going through informal rulemaking and trying to figure out exactly what they're going to create in the law. The regulations are, will be hopefully adopted, well, hopefully CalRecycle has started the formal rulemaking early this year, and those will be going into effect in January of 2022. In 2024, jurisdictions will be required to actually pick up the enforcement of this law. So from 2022 to 2024, the state will be doing enforcement. Part of the law says they're going to hand that over, very nice of them to hand over the enforcement aspects of the new law to local jurisdictions, so.
Do we currently have any idea what the state enforcement is going to be?
There are pages and pages of text within the regulation, and Mark can give you those answers. There's quite a bit. It's, for the first couple of years, it's really centering on education, giving the generators, whether it be residents or businesses, a chance to get into compliance and develop their plans and models, and it's progressive from that point on. By 2024, when we take it over, we have to have all those measures of progressive enforcement in place, and it can go from, it ultimately would end up, I believe, it's $50 a day of a fine, up to $500 a day. Is that about right?
So Dave, the punchline here is that we're trying to encourage people to not create waste rather than change the way decomposition happens?
No, we want them to not throw away food.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
We're trying to reduce the amount of waste that is generated.
Yes.
At the outset.
Yeah, and I.
Not process it some other way.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the difference between, or so when it says 50% reduction in 2020 versus regulations take effect, are they just mandating that we hit 50% prior then regulations take effect?
So under our current, under AB 939, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong again, we're currently required to divert waste out of our waste stream, and right now it's 50%, and I believe it goes up to 75%. This is specifically talking about organics, so our green waste, we're currently meeting that mandate and that target for our local jurisdiction of 50%. So it's really kind of a carryover in the.
The organic side.
Into the organic side, exactly.
And Dave, maybe you could just comment on that this isn't just residents, it carries over to encouraging the commercial side as well?
Yes, this is statewide, and it's for everybody. It's for every residence, it's for every commercial entity, it's even, I was speaking earlier, you know, anybody that has a small business, everybody's affected by this law. It's going to be vast.
So what are the repercussions of not hitting 50% in 2020? Are there any type of fees or?
We don't have to worry about it because we're already meeting it.
No, we're currently doing, and I'll address that very point with some, there's a little wrinkle, and you kind of picked up on it, and I'll address that as I go along.
Madam Mayor, if I may also jump in, this, if you would take a look at the orange portion of the slide, this law would require and will require local jurisdictions to act on the state's behalf, to issue fines to violators, and if the city does not do so, and the city has to impose a number of different criteria and regulations, if the city fails to do that, the state will then fine the city. So that impacts us as well, up to $10,000 per day.
If we choose not to enforce. So what does it mean for us? Here's our responsibilities. We're to provide waste collection services to all the residents and businesses. This means organic waste, including green waste, food waste, manure, fibers, et cetera. Containers have prescribed colors in the law, and there are the traditional gray, black for trash, green for organic, and blue for recyclable. There are container labeling and contamination monitoring requirements. We need to assess our collection programs and determine what we may need to, may need to be expanded or changed. We most likely need to change from collecting green waste every other week to collecting it weekly, because the items in the green waste now will be protrusible and rot, so those have to be collected weekly. But what that does give us some hope for is that we're looking into the possibility of collecting trash without food waste every other week. So we've simply flip-flopped the trash and green waste, and that's one of the unknowns we don't know that right now, and that is probably one of the biggest drivers of cost if we're unable to do that, meaning we would have to add more vehicles, more drivers, more maintenance, on and on. We need to establish an edible food recovery program for commercial edible food generators. We'll need to conduct education and outreach to all generators. Our jurisdiction will be required to procure certain levels of compost, renewable gas used for transportation fuels, electricity, heating applications, electricity from biomass conversion produced from organic recycling. We need to plan and secure access for recycling and edible food recovery capacity. We'll be required to monitor compliance and conduct enforcement, as our city attorney had mentioned, and enforcement must begin in 2024, as I stated earlier. Planning in 20, or in this current fiscal year is crucial, and we've already been undertaking that.
So if I could.
Yes.
When you say planning, you don't know the associated costs of all this yet?
We know some of the costs. We don't know what the big drivers are. We don't know if we can switch to the biweekly trash pickup from our current weekly service, and again, that is probably the biggest driver. I do have some costs to share with you, what we do know currently, and I do know that within our, we anticipated this law coming into effect, and we knew that our first and foremost need was going to be in staffing to do the public outreach, the compliance monitoring, the generation of new ordinances and enforcement. So that is included within our current rate proposal that we're coming back to you with in December.
But there's other things, too, that we need to consider that we don't know yet, like for every grocery store, how much of that food is going in the trash versus is there another option, or maybe they don't keep it as long and they donate it.
Correct.
To Twin Lakes Food Bank or whoever, so that that food ends up in someone's stomach instead of a trash can.
That's exactly right. That's the edible food recovery program.
Right. Last question to that, piggybacking on that, when do you expect you know those figures or extra costs?
Well, they're finalizing the formal regulations currently. We're hoping they're going to be done by the end of the year, probably early next year. Being able to go through that and meet with the county, who's going to have a large role in this, especially under the edible food recovery program, they're responsible for implementing that within the county. So we won't know probably a year before we really know what some of the hard numbers are.
Plus, there's technology that the county could be employing that I don't think they are at the moment with regard to methane reduction.
As well as private recyclers, and I'll touch on that as well.
Well, we had that presentation a couple of years ago, the people that wanted to put that facility at Folsom Prison.
Right.
So I guess one of my biggest issues with this is that, you know, given the fact that it's not, it's never been an if, it's a win since 2016, having this compiled and understanding the cost, I feel like would be beneficial to have it built into this rate increase, that all the costs, because we're going to have to come back again after this is said and done, when we realize the cost, even after this, or the process we're in right now for the rate increase, we're going to go right back.
So here's the issue with delaying, is currently we've delayed for 15 years raising our rates, and we are already looking at substantial increases over the costs we already know. We know that those will be going up. If we wait, those increases are going to be massive, and it will be to the point where it will be very impactful for our rate payers. If we can implement what we know our needs are now and start to catch up from where we probably should have been over the past five or 10 years, waiting another year or two will put us even further behind that curve and create, we will have rate hikes that will double overnight, and that will be very impactful.
And, you know, plus, even if you wanted to include this, we are not currently, because we don't have a program that accounts for all of these elements, you can't possibly audit something that doesn't exist in order to comply for Prop 2, with Prop 218.
Right.
Yeah, you can continue.
So our courage system remains. That's probably the, one of the biggest keys and takeaways for tonight, that we won't be seeing a massive change in what we currently do, the three-cycle system, or the three-can system. The regulations require that, you know, all the organics, all the residents and businesses recycle their waste and, or the organic waste, and the current system we have in place is allowed under the new regulation. We could have gone to a one-can system or a two-can system, but the three-can system is in place, people know what it is. It'll just be a little shift from, you know, putting your organic waste or your food waste into your green waste.
This is going to be a huge education component, because right now, all of that is going into the regular trash can, and the food-soiled paper is currently going in the recycled can.
Correct.
Because I don't think we've gotten people to understand that they have to stop doing that now.
No pizza boxes.
Right.
Right. One of the things I do want to touch on with our, the vendor we're currently in negotiations with is, one of the reasons we chose that vendor was because they will accept bags in the green waste for the food, the food waste, and it's any bag. They don't, it doesn't have to be a special bag that's biodegradable or compostable or anything, it doesn't have to be paper, it can be any bag that can go in that. So that's another key takeaway in our negotiations, to help ease into this, because to try and think that everybody's going to be able to comply with a particular bag and a particular method would be a little difficult. Like I said earlier, major city staff involvement. Between 2022 and 2024, the focus is on educating the generators, and that includes residents. The goal is to make sure that every generator has the opportunity to comply before the mandatory jurisdiction enforcement becomes effective in 2024, and the regulations allow for two years of education compliance. After January, jurisdictions will need to take progressive enforcement against the generators, and I say generators, and that's residents and commercial businesses. So an early, robust education program will minimize the amount of future enforcement, hopefully, that is needed to comply. Extensive record-keeping, you can only imagine, I put the major ones on the screens here. Many sections require a minimum level of record-keeping, ordinances, contracts, franchise agreements. This is a snapshot of what's to be kept in the implementation record. CalRecycle staff may review the implementation record as part of their audit of our program, and they go on to say, you know, that the record has to be kept onsite, or, excuse me, it can be kept offsite, but it has to be in one central location, has to be physical or electronic, it needs to be accessible to CalRecycle staff within 10 business days, and needs to be retained for five years. So there's even a retention requirement that we need to keep with all this, all these CalRecycle will be evaluating the jurisdiction's compliance. Again, it's a statewide diversion target. Jurisdictions will have to demonstrate compliance with each of the prescriptive standards rather than determination of a good faith effort. Those days are going away, where you're working towards a good job, keep up the good work. No, you're either doing it or you're not, so that's part of the prescriptive measures in this law. So what do we have? Organic diversion services, ODS. So each jurisdiction must plan for the adequate capacity for the recycling of the waste and edible food recovery. For the edible food recovery capacity, each jurisdiction must plan for 20% to be diverted for human consumption, back to what you had said, Madam Mayor, they're looking to not just take it out, but to actually use it instead of throw it away. Each county will lead this effort by coordinating with the cities in the county to estimate existing, new, and/or expand capacity. For food recovery, the county and the city must contact edible food recovery organizations that serve the jurisdictions to determine how much existing planned capacity might be available. Counties and cities must demonstrate that they have access to organics recycling capacity through existing contracts, franchise agreements, or other ones. So the city of Folsom is currently addressing this requirement by participating with Sacramento County and the city of Sacramento to secure organics recycling capacity. Sacramento County and the City of Sacramento to secure organics recycling capacity. The procurement process is winding down, and the city has selected a preferred short-term service provider. Contract negotiations are underway with this short-term, under the short-term provision, and the long ones are considered, long-term proposals will be considered over the next couple of months. So the timeline, we started in January, put on RFP, the city, county, and City of Sacramento. Those were submitted in May. We've gone through the analysis, negotiations, and you can see we'll be coming before you in January, hopefully, with a contract to address our short-term capacity needs, with a delivery date of January 1st of next year.
Dave, just swing back up one step. Is it capacity for diversion from landfill, or is it capacity for diversion to a food program?
Yes, both.
It's both? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and it's, it becomes, you know, we've been using green waste, recycling, composting, and I'll touch on that, I think, in the next slide or two.
So is there, so there's requirements for diversion of certain types of waste from construction debris?
Correct.
Already?
Yes.
And in some jurisdictions, the way that contractors deal with that is by having a trash hauler that is certified, that they do all of the paperwork and make sure that it's being diverted. Is it possible that we could, within Folsom legislate, that our restaurants and grocery stores, those that have the sort of maybe bulky food waste, have a private contract for that service rather than the city providing it?
That's complicated because of the way the charter is written. We have a specific exclusion.
I'm just wondering if this is a business we want to be in at all?
Well, we have to.
And maybe the easiest solution is to put it back on the generator.
It would require changing the charter, Mike, is what I'm telling you. We have a specific requirement that solid waste services cannot be contracted out.
So but for that, it might still be the best solution.
What I'm telling you is that it means a change to the charter, which means it has to go to the voters. It's not an action that the council can take on our own.
I think they're pretty, they'll be pretty annoyed by this. They might be willing to change the charter.
And those are all very good points, and that's exactly what we're working through.
Okay.
We need to work through what the legislation allows us to do, what we're mandated to do. Those are all some of the final rules that are being hammered out, and we just don't know what those answers are yet.
Gotcha, okay.
So by May 9th on this timeline, you'll know the costs, or the estimated costs from the proposal responses?
A portion of it. We already know those, and I'll share those with you in a second.
So explain what a portion is. I mean, like, yeah.
For a small percentage of our green waste diversion.
Okay.
And we know what the short-term costs will be for our food waste recovery and diversion. What we don't know the cost for are the program costs, the, any vehicle costs that if we can't switch to biweekly trash service, we could anticipate what those are, but to include them in a rate at this point, we just don't know what those numbers are to be able to mandate.
Well, yeah, I'm not suggesting including them in the rate now. I'm suggesting, what I was suggesting prior was prolonging the rate increase until you knew the cost, so it's one rate increase as opposed to a couple trickling down each time something comes about.
Dave, haven't those costs already been included in the recommended solid waste rates that we, that we already did the 218 notice on?
We included staffing costs in that, but we, again, we anticipate.
So my pointing, to the extent that we know the cost, it's been included in the proposed rate increase for solid waste.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
We've included as many of the known kind of ramping up costs as is possible, but we don't know the actual collection, execution costs at this time, so we cannot include them in the proposed rates.
And in an ideal world, we will be looking at the rates more often than every 15 years, ideally, you know, I believe that the projected rate increases went through 2024, so the ideal situation is that the city would be looking at all of the utility rates, especially this one, within that five-year time period.
Right, and I want to just go back, and I want to state it again, we can't wait for what we currently know we need for our solid waste program. We're already behind the eight ball, and if we push off that rate increase, we could be in a bad situation within a year and a half. We could be going negative in our fund balance, and I think that was shared with you at the September 9th council meeting. If we continue to push that off, we won't, we'll have more broken-down vehicles, we'll have extremely high maintenance costs. We need to, we need to move forward now, but I think what's encouraging is what we do have the ability to do is to flatten out any of those spikes that we are seeing, that may be coming under this program. So just like we did over the last, you know, 15 years, we can maybe push off a vehicle a year, and that smoothes out that cost impact to our divisions.
I guess I'm not, I'm not trying to go backwards because it is what it is, but I guess in, I just want to make sure this is clear. If indeed, let's say in April or May, we realize those costs, or even in June, we realize those additional costs, we will be going back to the ratepayers to.
Not necessarily.
On April or June, no.
Not necessarily.
Very soon, within that proposed rate increase already, we'll be going back a second time.
Not necessarily. And here's a good example. What if, and this is hypothetical, and that's all we can do is kind of forecast, what if the recycling market comes back? What if there are generator or people that can pick that up, and we go back to what we were two years ago, and that's a $1.5 million, $1.1 million swing in our budget? If we go back to those revenues?
Yeah.
We don't know. We don't know what the costs are going to be for this, and we may find economy a scale by working with the county and the City of Sacramento, and the program costs may not be that high. And I have some, there's some numbers here, and it'll give you kind of an idea of what the known costs look like in comparison to the recycling, for example.
I guess for me, I would have loved to see this prior to the discussion of rate increases.
I wish we had this information prior to doing our rate study two years ago. We just didn't have it. And that's why I'm here tonight, sharing it with you, because now we have real numbers, and it's important for you to know what's coming.
Yeah, Mr. Nugent literally just came to me probably, I don't know, eight or nine days ago and said, I have this, and I said, let's get it on this agenda right now, you know, so that it's be under consideration during the proposed rate study 45-day review period.
And if the state hasn't completed putting together what the processes are going to be, there would have been absolutely no way to have this conversation two years ago.
Right.
You don't know.
They're still not finalized.
Until the final legislation comes out.
Right.
When did we, when did we produce the RFP for responses?
Excuse me?
When was the, when did we produce the information for the RFP to solicit responses? Because we had that information prior to that.
RFP went out in January, so I believe it was last December.
So that's what I'm saying, is this information was available, but we just didn't have it in our presentation.
We didn't know what the costs were. We knew what the, we knew what some of the requirements were, but we just didn't know what the costs were to include them in the analysis.
And we didn't know who, if anybody, was going to be interested in being the hauler for this type of material.
And RFP just describes the need, it doesn't provide us with the costs.
Yeah, I'm aware, but, yeah, anyway, we can move on. I'm just saying, for me, going back, not having all of these when we're in this discussion for rate increases, it troubles me because when this comes back, and it seems like to me, from when we were speaking, it was like 12 months-ish last month, so within that timeframe, bringing this and incorporating what we can, and just pushing the rate increase a little bit further down for me, I think it would have been, I know you're saying it would have been drastic, but I would imagine there's things that could have taken place to prolong it just a little bit, because I just don't want to go back twice.
Nor do we.
Yeah.
I mean, we really don't, and we're hoping that we can absorb a lot of this, and, you know, and some of the, some of the increases that were proposed are technology-based and efficiency-based. If we can garner better efficiencies out of our current operations and reduce costs, we can absorb this kind of impact a little bit better.
And there may actually turn out to be a marketplace for this, just like we didn't anticipate how big the market was for recyclables when we first started doing that 15 years ago.
And just to be clear, you know, none of us as the staff, as the city manager or the executive management team, you know, looked forward to bringing a set of proposed utility rate increases. It just is crystal clear, it's woefully overdue, and it's 15 years overdue at this point, so that was why we had to bring them now.
So our selected contractor, we're still in negotiations, so we can't divulge who it is, but some of the key services in terms of the contract being proposed, we can share with you. So they will receive the green waste at the local transfer station and transport it to nearby facilities for composting. They'll provide compost to the city to help us meet the procurement requirements under this new law, and they will provide the services in the short term for five years with the option to extend the contract one year at a time for an additional five years. They are committed to constructing an anaerobic digestion facility in the long term that will produce compost, gas, and digestate, and I don't know what that is, but I'm sure it's got some market. And it will allow the residents, as I stated earlier, to place the.
Sometimes it's just used as fertilizer. That's going to be probably similar to some of the byproducts that are sold from the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I would assume so. So our provisions, this is our annual organics tonnage per ton cost in the terms of the proposed agreement. Based on the actual data the city collects, as I stated earlier, 9,000 tons of green waste from residents and commercial entities. Really don't have the actual data on the food waste generation, but like I said, from estimations and other sources, we're estimating that to be about 1,500 tons per year of food waste. The selected vendor has proposed a short-term solution as well as the long-term. As I mentioned, we're negotiating the short-term solutions, and we'll consider long-term solutions over the next month or two. The contract will include a yet-to-be-agreed-upon annual escalator based on the Consumer Price Index, but for budgetary purchases, we use approximately 3%. Short-term organics, another wrinkle, and Councilmember Gaylord, you had mentioned this, is what's the changes to our current green waste program. As I indicated earlier, the 9,000 tons that we're recycling goes to Kiefer landfill at $30 per ton, and they use it currently as alternative daily cover. This rate is anticipated, we already know that the rate is going up beginning January 1st of next year to $43 a ton. The city receives a credit towards its 50% diversion mandate from that tonnage. However, state law AB 1594 removes the diversion credit after January 1st, and the materials can still be used at the landfill for alternative daily cover, but we will not, no longer receive the diversion credit, and by 2022, it may not be landfilled at all, so all green waste will be out of the landfills. The city will continue to deliver to Kiefer from January of next year through July and forego our diversion credits. After July 1st, the city will begin to deliver to our new vendor at a new location, but it's at a higher price, but we will begin receiving our diversion credits again. The Solid Waste Division developed a strategic plan to maintain compliance with its diversion requirements and eliminate the landfilling of material that's been source-separated by generators for recycling in spite of the increased cost.
Dave, were you expecting that the new termination point is closer than the landfill?
No, we're not that lucky.
Significantly further?
Not significantly, but further.
Okay.
So here's an ugly graph or an ugly chart that tries to get to the cost. So currently in fiscal year 1819, the 9,000 tons at $30 a ton was $270,000 for our program for our green waste recycle, or diversion, which is called diversion. Fiscal year 1920, which we're in the middle of currently, or no, we're not, yeah, we are, we're in the middle of it currently.
Well, next month we will be.
Yeah, next month. So we have about six months at our current rate of $30 a ton. We know it's going up to $43 a ton in January, increase of about $58,000 for this fiscal year. However, next fiscal year, beginning July 1st, is when it goes to $77 a ton, and the full 9,000 yards will be captured under that higher rate, and we're looking at an impact of about 693, or the cost will be $693,000 or an incremental cost from current about Fiscal year 2122, it goes to $79 a ton using the CPI for six months, and then it jumps to $97 a ton when we begin to add food waste. So you can see that these costs have tripled in three years from our current green waste costs. These projections do not include the city's costs for labor or transportation to deliver the organics to the contractor's transfer station, but like we had mentioned, they're not that much further. We just don't, we can't quantify that yet because we haven't started gathering that data. They also do not include the administrative costs for personnel to manage the organics program. However, we did include those in the current rate structure.
Didn't you say that you added at least, I think it was one position for overseeing this?
At least one position.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, I think we're anticipating two, one full-time, multiple part-time.
We included one full-time in the rate study.
Marie, why don't you approach a microphone? Thank you.
We included one full-time position in the rate study for a senior environmental specialist to oversee this program. Looking at the regulations, which I just received a summary of last week, I would anticipate at least two to three. There's a lot of regulations that we're going to have to implement.
So looking at a cumulative increase, about $780,000, like I mentioned earlier, comparing it to our recycling program, that was about a $1.1 million swing in our budget. So we know we can, you know, we can smooth this out over time. We know that these impacts are going to be dramatic. Wanted to get in front of you tonight to tell you what's coming, but we're well-positioned right now in the short-term capacity diversion issues. We'll continue to monitor regulations, and as they unfold, to determine just how the final program regulations will impact our budget, and we'll be back in front of you to give you those updates and forecasts. And just so you know, I did not have a chance to present this to the Utility Advisory Committee, but I will be presenting to them next Tuesday night, because I wanted to get it in front of you guys first. So if you have any really technical questions, we got the people here to answer it for you.
Is there, the RFQ that you put out is in partnership with the county and the City of Sacramento?
Correct.
What are other peer cities in the county planning to do?
I believe all three of us have chosen the same vendor.
So Elk Grove and Rancho?
I'm not sure what the other jurisdictions are doing. Do you know?
Do you have a sense of what they might be doing?
It's different in the other jurisdictions because the other jurisdictions don't haul their own trash. Elk Grove has franchise agreements with Republic Services, Rancho Cordova the same, and Citrus Heights the same, so they're relying on Republic Services to provide the capacity. So they're, they haven't done any procurement in regard to that.
Gotcha.
The City of the County of Sacramento and the City of Folsom, the only entity in this region that is currently undergoing a procurement process to secure the diversion capacity.
Okay, so two things then. I don't want anybody to think that I'm suggesting that we use an outside vendor to do this. That is not my, that has nothing to do with this. I just have the question, which you may not know the answer to, which is what will Republic and those other companies end up doing most likely? Similar vendor arrangement with someone else, or are they building capacity to process themselves?
I think it would be reasonable for me to divulge that we're probably going to be using the same vendor.
Okay, all right, all right.
Probably going to be using the same vendor. The company, the company that we're negotiating with currently has ties.
Trying to build capacity for everyone, undoubtedly.
Correct, correct. The transfer station that we're proposing that we take the material to receives material from the other jurisdictions currently, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so the capacity is there, and that's what we're grappling with. They only have so much capacity at this particular transfer station, they can only have so many vehicles and accept so many tons according to their permit, so they're trying to juggle that now with the material that we're going to deliver.
In the near term, is it at all possible to have that operator operate a composting location in the city prior to them having the digester onboard? Then you eliminate a lot of transportation potentially.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the permitting requirements are to begin a composting facility that would be able to handle the kind of volume. I could imagine they're pretty complex.
Well, I mean, composting doesn't take that long, so you don't have 9,000 tons all at once.
Right.
I'm just curious.
It would probably take about 10 years to permit a composting, a new composting facility. The, all of the vendors that have, that submitted proposals have existing facilities already for the short. for the short term. We only looked at existing facilities because we've got to get this started here in the next couple of years. For the long term, there are proposals to build new facilities, but those are 10, 15 years out.
Okay.
But I would also think that the other advantage that we have with using one of these firms that has existing capacity is that I would like to think, and this goes back to the marketing side, that if they get a large enough commitment, that, you know, they're then basically producing power with the methane being generated. But it's not cost-effective if you don't have a sufficient volume. We had a presentation, I don't know, four years ago about a company that wanted to do a similar type operation at Folsom Prison.
Yeah, randomly, I designed a building with digesters in it up in Lake Tahoe once upon a time, so I happen to be familiar with that.
It's a large capital.
It's a large capital investment, yeah, absolutely. The only other question I have is that the, if the short-term solution is composting, that doesn't resolve the methane issue at all. Because composting is just allowing it to decompose in its normal fashion, which is going off-gas in the exact same way. It's just not concentrated at the-
Doesn't go anaerobic though, does it?
Right?
I don't think it goes anaerobic when you're composting.
Really?
Gets it absorbed, right?
Okay.
I think that's why you turn it over and keep turning it.
Okay.
I don't know, that's a technical question. But I really think that the whole key is the five-year, the short, and the reason it is a short-term, long-term is so that facilities and vendors have the opportunity to, you know, gather, secure contracts, know what their funding stream is going to be to invest in these digesters.
I asked that question just to re-center myself and not be furious with the state of California for dropping more unfunded mandates on us. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes?
That was going to be my first comment. At what point don't do cities just throw up their hands and say, "Sorry, sorry, State of California, we can't do these things anymore unless you, you know, attach some funding to it." But I just want to make sure I understand this. So let's say in 2024, I throw a banana peel into my gray garbage can instead of putting it into my green can, I face a potential fine. That's what you're saying?
Yes.
And who's going to know? How are we going to police that?
That is part of the enforcement plan that we have to develop. We have to, there will be people out, spot checking, lifting cans, photographing, and some of the technology that we want to get into is cameras on vehicles so we can identify the waste as it goes into the vehicle.
Yeah, I don't want to kill the messenger, but this is insane.
And the enforcement is put on us at the local government level.
And I would guess honestly, Sarah, that you say who's going to find that, but I know this has been going on in the automotive industry for a really long time. They have, there's haulers of waste oil, and it gets recycled in a certain way, but if somebody, one of the mechanics dumps brake fluid in there, contaminates the whole 55-gallon drum, and it's a huge fine.
Yeah, but so, like right now, if I put an aluminum can in my garbage can, there's no fine, and there won't be a fine on that in the future.
Correct.
This is, the fine is only related to organics, you're saying?
Yes. I will say yes, but I'm not entirely certain that that's true.
And so my other question is, you know, when they put these mandates on that, you know, we have to, let's say right now, divert 50% of our waste from the landfill, right?
Right.
And as people reduce their consumption and they get better at recycling, and doesn't that number get harder and harder to achieve?
Yes, it does, but we also are allowed to know what the total quantity is. So if the overall quantity is going down, the percentages change as well, or the amount we need to get to that percentage changes as well.
Okay, well, I'm going to do it just one time. I'm going to stick a banana peel in my garbage can and see what happens. Tell the state of California to come after me.
Can you afford it? You better save your money.
Yeah, we won't be inspecting it. Okay?
Any other questions? Thanks, Dave. And with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Do we have anybody that would like to pull anything from consent? Anybody wants to pull consent?
Yep.
I'll move the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, including receipt of that correspondence on 70 that, that report didn't actually change. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay, then we will move to item nine, which we're going to see, we're going to hear in front of item eight. That's, we will convene the Joint City Council-Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Regent.
Aquino?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Gaylord is absent, and Howell?
Here.
Gaylord is now present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Finance Director, and tonight I'm presenting CFD 21 Special Tax Bonds Series For a little background information, on February 13th, 2018, the council approved CFD Number 21, and it was to provide for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements, including backbone infrastructure for things such as roadway construction, utility line extensions, storm drain detention basins, earthwork and retaining walls, and landscaping, and also for subdivision improvements such as underground utilities, subdivision roadways, street lighting, sound walls, and landscaping. CFD 21, known as White Rock Springs Ranch, consists of approximately 152 acres, and it's located east of Placerville Road between Highway 50 and White Rock Road. Development within CFD 21 is entitled for a total of 423 dwelling units, and it's broken up into two phases. So there's the car trust and Villages 1, 8, and 9 in the first phase, and they're entitled for development of 207 single-family units. And the second phase includes Villages 2 through 7 and is entitled for the remaining 216 single-family units. And here's a picture of the proposed development, and so I just wanted to show you. Village 1 is over here on the left side, Villages 8 and 9 appear at the top, and the car trust subdivision right here, and so that makes up Phase 1. And then the rest over here is Phase 2. The total estimated cost to construct all of the facilities necessary to serve CFD 21 are about $72.2 million, so that's $14 million for the backbone infrastructure and $58 million for the subdivision improvements. So we're proposing the issuance of special tax revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $12 million, and the proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition of public facilities, fund a debt service reserve, fund capitalized interest, and pay certain costs of issuance. The recently appraised value of the property within CFD 21 is $59.7 million, and with this proposed debt issuance, this provides a value-to-lean ratio of 4.9 to 1, which is in the compliance of the city's CFD policy. Also in compliance with the city's policy is the projected tax burden per parcel at By taking these actions and approving these resolutions, you're approving the form of various required documents that are listed here on this slide in the first bullet, and you are also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents and take appropriate actions to prepare to issue such bonds. So with that, I am recommending the approval of City Council Resolution Number 10358, City Council Resolution Number 10359, and Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Resolution Number 005, Folsom Ranch FA. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just have one quick question. The percentage tax rate that you said, the 1.78%, is that the overall or just specifically for this particular issuance?
That would be overall at this point.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I was just going to ask the city attorney that same question. Do we need to do these separately?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor, but also this is a public hearing item.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing. No one has made any request to speak. Would anyone like to come and speak on this issue? No one's rushing forward, so we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Or a first motion.
I can move to adopt Resolution Number 10358.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
And I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 10359.
Second. And a second?
I'll shake it.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
And I will move to adopt Folsom Ranch Resolution Number 005, Folsom Ranch FA. I don't know.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll shake it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. So we will adjourn the Joint City Council-Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting, and that moves us to what's listed on the agenda as item 8A. And the first item is presentation on new legislation on microenterprise home kitchen operations and direction to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the city council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director, and we're having so much fun talking about new state laws that we're going to do it again. This one is a little bit different in that-
In that it generates food waste.
It generates food waste, exactly. It's different in that it's not a mandate. It's something that at the county level here in Sacramento, we have the option of opting in or out of, and by we, I mean the jurisdiction that issues health permits, which in our jurisdiction is Sacramento County. So with us tonight, I have Marie Wooden, who is the Director of Sacramento County's Environmental Management Department, and she's going to go through and explain the legislation. And the reason that we have it as a new business item rather than just a presentation is that we are asking you to provide staff direction so that we can recommend to the board that we opt in or opt out. Our recommendation is that we opt out, and hopefully that you will agree and provide that direction to us. But the county staff is here to help you understand a little bit more about the opportunities and potential concerns, so, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Howell and council members. Thank you for inviting us. Marie Wooden, and I also have with me Division Chief Kelly McCoy. She oversees our food safety program. She's here to answer any questions you may have after the presentation. So the microhome enterprise kitchen has generated a lot of interest from home cooks. Sorry, that's a little busy there, sorry. Anyway, before the bill was passed a couple years, these third-party platforms began appearing on the internet. These social media platforms were inviting home cooks to come onto their platform, and they would advertise their food that they would sell to the public. In the county of Alameda, there was a couple of these social media platforms that the district attorney did eventually shut down. They were called Josephine and Company. Shortly thereafter, the AB 626 was introduced into the legislature, appealing to the legislature to pass AB 626 for the microhome enterprise kitchen. This third-party platform language does now exist within this new bill. Microhome kitchens have the option to sign up with a third-party platform to advertise their kitchen. The third-party platform service can charge a 10% fee to the MECO and for food sales for their advertising. Third-party platforms must now register with the California Department of Health. So a little bit background regarding, I guess, cooking out of the home. In January 2013, the cottage food operation was approved, limited to non-potentially hazardous shelf-stable foods such as cookies, pies, cakes, and breads, and jams. Business licenses required. The home cook can generate 50,000 max annual gross sales. They allow pickup and delivery of food from the home. Food could be sold to retail food facilities and directly to the consumer at community events and swap meets. They are inspected and permitted by our department. In September 2018, the MECO bill was signed into law, but became effective this January. AB 626 establishes the microhome enterprise kitchen operation as a new type of retail food facility operated by a resident from their private home. AB 377 was cleanup language to AB 626 that was signed by the governor in October of this year and effective immediately. These regulations are now added to the California Retail Food Code. MECOs may not be approved or permitted until the local jurisdiction within the local enforcement agency, in our case, it's the Environmental Management Department, authorizes it or opts into law. So what this last statement means is because the enforcement agency lies within the governing body of Sacramento County, it's the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County that has the authority to opt in or opt out of the bill. Some key points of AB 377, it clarifies that the authority to permit the MECOs is the city or the counties that are designated as a local enforcement agency. It reveals a provision of the law that requires one lead local agency collect all fees for any permit, license, or other authorization for MECOs. It prohibits the MECOs from engaging in production, manufacturing, processing, freezing, or packaging of milk or milk products. It requires the MECO to restrict people infected with a communicable disease from entering the food preparation area. Requires service animals in addition to other animals to be kept out of the kitchen of a MECO during food service and preparation. Food produced in a MECO is prohibited from being delivered by a third-party delivery service unless it's to an individual who has a disability. Requires all of the following within advertisement: their permit number, the Sacramento County Environmental Management Department that we issued the permit, and a statement that the food is made in a home kitchen in a clear and conspicuous type of manner, font, audible, et cetera. The MECO is only subject to the following three types of inspections by our department, should this be opted in. A routine inspection, it limits the routine inspection to no more than once a year, and we must provide notice and conduct the inspection at a mutual agreeable date and time. An investigation inspection, we can do that if we've received one or more complaints about the MECO. Requires advanced notice and mutually agreeable date and time for the inspection. Or an emergency inspection when the enforcement agency, us, has just caused that the MECO poses a serious hazard or immediate threat. Again, prior notice to the extent the notice is reasonable. So why did they pass this law? There were two groups that were in favor of this law. That was Airbnb and the Home Cook Alliance Group. And they appealed to the legislature and said that this bill would do, or this language, this proposed language would do several things. Economic empowerment, specifically for unrepresented groups and underserved communities. It's part of the gig economy or shared economy. Food access, it would increase food to healthy and affordable food options, particularly in food deserts, and it's an easy, less expensive pathway to become a food entrepreneur or startup. So the county Board of Supervisors has these options. They can opt in, authorize MECOs countywide, and what that would mean is they would be authorized in all incorporated, unincorporated areas. Cities would not be able to opt out. They can formally not opt in and decline the permitting of MECOs countywide, and the cities would not have the option to opt in, or they can take no action. Again, the Environmental Management Department would be the regulatory agency in all jurisdictions within Sacramento County to permit and inspect the MECOs. Some more language about AB 626. Food preparation is limited to 30 meals per day or-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know, you don't need to read the whole slide. I think we can, I'm almost wondering if there's a way to kind of cut to the chase. What does the county want to do?
Okay.
What does the county want us to do?
All right, let me, want me to go over the areas of concerns? Because we met with the county departments and the different cities on three special dates, and there are areas of concern who we invited were zoning, building, planning department, code enforcement, the POP officers wanted to come, county council. And we reached out to Metro Fire as well as the Regional Sanitation District because they have a fats, oils, and grease program. So their concerns were MECOs located in high-density housing, subsidized housing, and homeowners associations may have issues related to parking, access and use of home as a business. Our department and the health officer, we have food safety concerns, contamination risk of food equipment and surfaces, temperature control of food, sanitation. Home kitchens are not built to commercial standards for sanitation, cleanability, and vermin exclusion. There are no unannounced inspections or placards. So unlike a restaurant, we only conduct one annual inspection. The inspection is scheduled ahead of time, and the inspectors are limited to inspecting the areas that the operator says are used. Okay? Potential- Potential community impacts, they are concerned with traffic, increased traffic in neighborhood or parking issues, increased noise, solid waste garbage, kitchen fires, increased levels of fats, oils, and greases disposed to sewer lines, water and wastewater impacts, increased use of barbecue outdoors ovens, and then possibly residential homes not built to meet the ADA standards. MECOs may not be able to fully accommodate customers with disabilities. So with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I do. So you had a slide where somebody could make breads, or cakes, or cookies, or something like that.
That's the Cottage Food Bill.
Okay. So, so what are they making under this MECO that's different than that?
They can make anything, except what I said, the raw milk, oysters, some...
If I want to sell lasagna out of my house, or something like that.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay.
But it's still within the realm of the Cottage Food Bill for selling in $50,000 and whatnot, right?
Yes.
It just opens the door to more products.
Correct.
And for the council's benefit, we participated in these meetings and evaluated the conduct against the kinds of things that are otherwise allowed through our home occupation ordinance, and this would allow for, you know, additional vehicles, employees, parking, traffic, things that we don't currently allow for other home-based business. So it would potentially have an impact beyond kind of a traditional, single-family home within our community, and so the recommendation in your staff report is that we opt out, which most jurisdictions in the Sacramento County have now done. We're actually the last community to weigh in, and only one jurisdiction, as I understand it, Marie, has taken a neutral position. All others have recommended we opt out, so, in Sacramento County. So kind of regardless of what we do, the board may opt out because they've already received that much opposition from other jurisdictions, but we're asking you, based on our evaluation against how we otherwise regulate home businesses, that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we opt out of this new legislation.
Yeah, and I would tend to agree with that personally. My business is based out of my home, and I know the rules and regulations that I had to go through to get that home business occupancy permit, and I don't have clients coming to my house, and that would really annoy me if my neighbors were doing stuff like that.
I've got a question. I'll try to be coherent in asking it. In the area where you say the supervisors can approve it, and the cities have no choice.
Correct.
Somebody here, oh, they can disapprove it and we have no choice.
Correct.
I wonder why you're asking us.
They're asking...
They're giving us the option to provide a recommendation, and that's what we'd like to do.
The board wanted to hear what the cities to weigh in, you know, so that's why we met with all the different cities on two different occasions. We also met within our own county internal departments.
I think I know where I'm going to vote.
Are we going to have public comment on this? Did we?
We can open it for public comment. Anybody like to come and address this issue? I don't see anybody coming up.
I'll move that we recommend opting out.
Do we have a second?
I do.
Okay. Do you want to make a comment before we call the question?
No, you can just call the question.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay, and with that, we are moving on to Item 8B, which was a request by Vice Mayor Aquino for consideration of the City Council Governance Manual and provide direction to staff.
Okay.
You are up, Ms. Aquino.
I'm going to wait for my thing to come up.
Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, tonight. I would like to introduce the concept of a governance guide handbook, manual, whatever we would like to call it. I'm going to explain what it is and why I think we need one. I'm going to offer some suggestions for general content, and I'll provide sample language for five of those content areas, and then I'm going to share what some of the jurisdictions in our region have done. And finally, I am going to ask for your support of the creation and adoption of a governance guide for this council. So, what am I pointing this at?
Just towards the podium.
And I...
Do you want this thing on the side?
Yeah.
If you want to just say next, I'll be happy to...
Next, I guess. So what do I mean by a governance guide? I'm talking about a living document that contains mutually agreed-upon governance norms. So basically, an agreement between all of us about how we're going to conduct council business. Next, please. Why do we need a governance guide? On this dais, we have an architect, a security consultant, an engineer, a life and health insurance broker, and a retired Air Force officer. We've also got different educational experience, different political philosophies, different priorities as far as what we want to accomplish while we're in office, and part of the art of governing is working together to take all of that experience and those differences and use it to our advantage to make sound policy decisions. And I believe if we as a body make a commitment to engage in policy-level debate and communicate openly, honestly, and respectfully, and observe some basic protocols about the way we conduct the city's business, the result will be better outcomes for our community. Next, please. I also want to be really clear about what this is not. This is not intended to be punitive. Nothing will happen if we fall short or don't live up to the principles we're proposing. It is not intended to stifle creativity or inhibit anybody's personality or personal style. It's not intended to be set in stone. As a matter of fact, it should be reviewed regularly and edited and amended as necessary to make sure it always reflects the values of the council, and it is definitely not intended to be the words of just Sarah Aquino. This very much needs to be a collaborative effort, and if this is something that we decide to do, the final product should something we all believe in, should be something that we all believe in and strive to adhere to. The idea of a governance guide is not revolutionary or groundbreaking. Several jurisdictions have a similar document, including the City of Citrus Heights, the City of Elk Grove, and the Folsom Cordova School Board. They all vary in their scope. The city manager and the mayor and I met a few months ago with the executive director or the executive of Yolo County, and they have a governance manual that very much covers, you know, just the principles and the protocols of governing. They talk about effective governance and unity of purpose. They actually hired a facilitator to help them. They wrote it from scratch. You compare that to the other end of the spectrum, which is the City of Rockland, they have a mammoth 133-page document. It covers governance, city finances, the council's role in a disaster. I mean, I think it's more intended as a handbook for new council members. I'm not sure it's necessary for us to hire a facilitator, and I don't know that we need to be as comprehensive as the City of Rockland, but if this is something we want to do, the scope is something we'll have to discuss. Obviously, we can start small and add sections over time. There is, if you start to review some of these handbooks, as I have, between the different jurisdictions, you will start to see some common language, and so I'm not sure if the League of California Cities, you know, drafted a sample at some point, or one city did it and everybody followed, but I'm going to show you a paragraph a little bit later that has appeared in everybody's governance handbook. So I've got to assume they're borrowing from each other. Next one. So some of the content areas that I'm suggesting is just some basic things about good governance. You know, what are the characteristics of an effective council? What are the characteristics of an effective council member? Talk about our roles and responsibilities versus that of staff. Obviously, a pretty robust section about communication, not only communication between council members, but between us and the city manager, between us and the public. What does it mean to be speaking for the city, and how is that different than when you're, you know, speaking on your own behalf? Possibly something about social media guidelines or best practices, basically to keep us from running afoul of the Brown Act. Also, just some basic protocols. You know, Councilmember Gaylord has mentioned in the past his desire to have kind of an onboarding process for new council members. You know, maybe some stuff about the outside committee assignments we have, placing items on the agenda, Robert's Rules of Order, all that sort of stuff. Obviously, anything that we want to put into a governance guide or handbook has to be consistent with our charter and with our municipal code, but we also do have the authority to amend our municipal code. So, next one, please, Pam. I do want to just provide some sample language for five different content areas, and I want to emphasize that this is just sample language. So if we decide to move forward, you know, I anticipate that the council will have some very thoughtful discussions about the scope and the content areas, and then, you know, we will talk about the actual language that we would like to see. But next one, please. So if we're just looking, you know, looking at, you know, what is an effective council? An effective council respects the role and function of the public city staff and the city manager, makes decisions that are in the best interest of the city, and considers that short-term decisions often have long-term consequences, seeks consensus and common ground knowing there are rarely perfect solutions, respects the governing process, and follows implementation of the will of the majority, and represents all residents and knows that a vocal minority doesn't necessarily reflect the view of a quiet majority. So again, that's just some sample language, things that I kind of pulled from different places, but again, this is all things that I would hope this council would discuss. Next one, please. Characteristics of an effective council member. An effective council member commits the time necessary to understand the issues, acknowledges his or her own biases and prejudices, listens with an open mind, and is willing to have preconceived ideas challenged, recognizes that his or her colleagues were also elected and deserve the same level of respect for having run and won, understands that authority rests with the council as a whole and not with individual council members, limits his or her critique to the idea being proposed and not to the person proposing it, and accepts criticism of a policy or proposal without taking it personally, respects the expertise of city staff, and understands staff's desire to provide factual, neutral information to the council. Go ahead, next one. I thought I put a, go ahead. Okay. So this is the section that I have seen in every, almost every one of the council handbooks that I have seen. So obviously, you know, delineating when you're speaking for the city and when you're speaking on behalf of yourself is something that most jurisdictions, I guess, consider important, so that could be something we could include. Go ahead, next one. Again, as I mentioned, go ahead, next one. You know, Councilmember Gaylord's talked about an onboarding process for new council members in the past. I think the city manager did a great job with the orientation, you know, that was kind of geared to me and Mike this year, and maybe we'd like to introduce some sort of language about, you know, what sort of resources and assistance should be provided to newly-elected council members, with the goal of bringing them on board sooner and becoming a stronger, more cohesive governance team. So, you know, some of the things there, just about, again, an orientation, and existing council members reaching out to new council members, working with the city manager to schedule additional meetings, all that sort of stuff. Next one. As you're aware, our charter says that the mayor will represent the city in intergovernmental relations personally or by a representative designated by him or her with the concurrence of the council. I'm thinking that, you know, what if we take that a step farther and think about what we're trying to achieve with those committee assignments? And maybe a governance guidebook could include language from that middle paragraph, such as, care should be taken to distribute the workload as evenly as possible, capitalize on subject matter expertise, and keep committee assignments as consistent as possible year to year to maintain the city's seniority on regional committees. Go ahead, you're going to have to do it a couple times because I highlighted that paragraph. There you go. Okay. So, you know, I could go on and on in terms of sample language. Hopefully, I've given you enough of an idea of what it is that I mean when I'm talking about a governance guide. I think the big question today is, is this something you support? I would respectfully request that you do support the creation and adoption of a governance guide, and if this is something that we decide would be of value to the council. I think the next steps are determine the scope of the guide. Are we looking at, you know, more about just kind of governance norms and not necessarily a very comprehensive handbook like the City of Rockland has? Then we would suggest content areas. You know, maybe you don't like the list that I came up with, or maybe you want to take something off and put something on. All of that is fine, and then decide how to move forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
I think I'll start with, I like the part on here. I like a lot of pieces of this, so thank you, first of all, for putting this together. I know you spoke highly of it and much of it during your campaigning, and it was, it's good to see it here. The onboarding process is something we absolutely need, so I'd love to see that written in stone, and it's a process much like any other employment would be. You know, when we start, when I started, it was, it was really nothing. It was, here's your packet, and here's your first meeting, so that would be great. I'm wary about anything that ever says anything about social media guidelines. That's our, you know, my, at least my chosen path of communication, so I want to make sure that that doesn't impede on that. I mean, that's basically in this day and age where we go out and we were able to communicate with constituents. I do think that it needs to be cordial and respectful when it's in a capacity of, an official capacity at least, and I agree with the speaking-for-the-city element. So, long story short, I think it's something that we could use. I think it's something that has a lot of meat in it and could help shape a better, a better city council, so, well done.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, I'll second all of that. The, with the, just a caveat with regard to the social media stuff. As part of the onboarding that was developed based on your comments for Sarah and I, we actually had a pretty robust discussion about the intersection of the limitations that the Brown Act puts on us as elected officials and the use of social media. So I think that's really the key spot.
I would agree with you, Mike, that that's very important.
Making sure that we are not running afoul of the Brown Act inadvertently by maybe, you know, too many of us being on a particular post or something like that. So, so it's those limitations that we're, that I think absolutely need to be made, you know, there's no reason to not make those more public, honestly, because the Brown Act is the Brown Act, and it is, it does affect how it is that you use social media, all of us.
And there's also been case law since then, so I think that's important to consider.
And I would say that if we're going to do this, we have to one-up Rockland, so we either have to get it down to one page and really thumb our nose at them, or we need 134 pages, so. I would be game to help out with helping flesh this out.
The one from Yolo County was pretty helpful. Probably went into maybe even a little bit more detail than I think we need, but I'm...
Well, yeah, I, for one, am not afraid of a document that will restrict me from being the councilman I think I should be, the representation I should give. So I encourage this, but I do not agree on social media, only if you're really in what the council has agreed upon. If you disagree with any one of us, we should not take our disagreement to social media to react against us. This council has to be a team player. I mean, that's what, that's how you get effective.
So, Ernie, are you saying that you want to have a policy in here about how you, how social media is dealt with?
I want to caution that it's not a, someone didn't get their way.
Well, I think Roger was suggesting that he doesn't want there to be a discussion of social media in here, and are you saying the opposite, that you do want...
I don't want to say no, because I'm against freedom of speech, but I want to be careful that any one of us don't take the social media to fight our problems. It should be done in this council. If we have a disagreement, we should have it now. Everybody as an individual should be given the same rights of expressing the disagreement here in this panel, okay, at all times. If we needed the agenda, and this is illegal, and the lawyer would tell us that, I would ask the mayor, which I think you've been pretty fair, allowing us to have our agenda item discussed, okay? As I asked you the other day to add an item, I thought your answer was perfect. I'll add it, but I don't agree with it, and that's fine. Okay? That's fine, and I can accept that.
Okay, which is fine, but I'm trying to get back to the, to the point.
There are a lot of good...
The point was, and if there's anything else I think that you would like to add that isn't already included in what the pre-presentation that Sarah made, I'm sure that she will be happy to entertain that, and that we will all be happy to discuss it. I'm just specifically asking you, are you wanting to include a discussion about how social media will be used by the council in the document?
Absolutely.
So that was a yes, okay.
You can, number one, whether, if that, you can include that discussion, but here's the thing, we're all, although we're five, we're elected independently, and we all have voices and opinions, that I will never support a document that stymies my voice or opinion so that I can reach the constituents, whether you agree with me or not.
Roger, we're not, we're not talking about eliminating your ability to do social media. We're only talking about addressing what we can or cannot do legally in the document.
What you just said was that you don't agree with social media use if it differs from the council's opinion. from the council's opinion.
I think, if I may, I think the point...
This is just about putting, having it addressed in the document.
Yeah. If I may, I think there was two things that came out.
The subject of social media being addressed in the document.
The one I suggested is that, you know, the legal limitations on its use so that we don't run afoul of the Brown Act, and if I may paraphrase Councilman Sheldon, the idea in here that was expressed as a, as a, as part of the sample was that we kind of follow the scout motto and be kind and, you know, trustworthy and polite to each other, and I think, is that what you were saying? Is that needs to extend to all forms of communication, and clarity needs to be had when you are speaking for your own opinion versus the voted-upon council...
You know, for some of the years, I sat in the back as a commissioner, and every time I got up to have a say, I was asked by the mayor, "Are you speaking for yourself or are you speaking as a chair or a representative commission?" And I had to qualify that every time, and I think the same thing applies to social media.
Yeah.
That's totally fair.
The only thing, I'm just gonna caution everybody, but as we're talking about general categories of what will and will not be discussed, we're not trying to hammer out any of this right now.
So I have one other question, then. How do you, how did you imagine us getting to a final document?
Well, I think that's up for discussion. Again, I don't want this to be the Sarah Aquino governance document, right? I want it to be a very collaborative process, and you can see there's gonna be, it's gonna be messy coming to consensus on some of these topics, which is, I think underscores the reason that we should have something like some of this stuff. Can you go back to the suggested, you know, content list or whatever? Thank you, yeah. So I guess what I was, you know, the one of the ways that we could do it is say, "Yeah, we're in agreement." Something like this would be helpful for the council. Here's some of the content, you know, that we would like to see, and then hand it over to staff and let them help facilitate it so that, you know, I'm kind of out of it and just one part of the council, and, and we, you know, maybe we start with something, you know, easy that we pretty much agree on, maybe the new council member orientation, onboarding process, whatever, and we just, you know, kind of section by section, take our time, have some thoughtful conversations. So I'm not suggesting that I need to, you know, present a whole draft and have you mark it up. If you want to do it that way, I'm fine to do it that way, but, you know, if we also want to turn this over to staff and let them kind of facilitate it, that's good, too.
Okay. I was just imagining that a kind of two- or three-step process might begin with each of us taking a stab at what we would, you know, of this outline that you've provided, what to add or subtract from it, and reach consensus on that, at least as a starting point, and then start to flesh out the individual pieces.
Yeah, I think it could easily be, you know, maybe a, you know, a three-meeting, you know, process that starts with just, you know, an agreement on the suggested content, and then it comes back with, okay, today we're gonna talk about, you know, these three pieces, and here's some suggested language, get your reaction, and just plow our way through, you know, slowly but deliberatively.
And let me just address Councilmember Gaylord. Again, I don't want this to stifle anybody's, you know, creativity, or, you know, we all have our different styles and our, you know, preferred communication methods and all that sort of stuff. So, I mean, you know, maybe we come to consensus on a social media thing, maybe we don't. I mean, my preference is that we keep working and we massage the language until we get something that we all agree on and we can all strive to adhere to, and maybe in social media, we're just talking about, you know, be cautious of liking somebody's post or commenting when other council members have, you know, because of the Brown Act or something. We don't want to prevent you from using that or try to dictate that in any way.
No, I understand. It's not even just me, and specifically, it's just in order, communication in general. So I'm fine with discussing it, I'm just saying if there's, if it comes out that it's, we're establishing rules as a body altogether, we're not a body altogether until we sit in these chairs. Outside of these chairs, we're independent, and that's the whole point of an at-large election, right?
But I think the point that they're trying to make, Roger, that I'm not sure is getting through, is that whether we're sitting in this room, whether we're at a restaurant down the street, if we're having a conversation about things that relate to decisions that this council's gonna make when we are sitting in these chairs, then having that conversation in a restaurant down the street when the public doesn't know that we're there, that's a Brown Act violation.
It's getting through, it's getting through, and I understand that. I'm saying independently, though, to have our own opinion. What I don't want to see is guidelines wrapped around council members independently.
Yeah, yep, and I, we're on the same page, and I think starting, you know, as Mike suggested, maybe, you know, we kind of chew on this list for a little bit and think about, you know, and I, you know, what would you like to see, what do you want to come off? If you want me to forward you, you know, Elk Grove and Yolo and Rancho Cordova, and, you know, I'm happy to do that, Rockland, so you can take a look. If you want to do some of your own research, that's fine. It sounds like there's at least consensus that everybody thinks something like this would be valuable. It's just, you know, what do we want to be in it?
And I think maybe for the time being, perhaps a way to start moving forward in that direction would be if anybody's got any specific comments, please hang on to this. If you think of things in the middle of the night, don't text Elaine, but send her an email, and you can maybe just compile them all in a folder and see about coming forward. Maybe the next time we have a discussion about what the outline would be, including all the categories...
Absolutely.
Then we start to break them apart in the other two meetings and see what's in them.
I don't want to get, you know, kill the, kill the cat, you know, keep talking on it, but I'm saying that is a...
No cat-killing.
Okay, yeah, right, of course. Your cat's too big, you kill. It'd be scary, your cat.
You might regret going after my cat.
That's right. No, I just, I want people to have the independence, but I don't want any councilmen to go against the unanimous opinion of what we said to create an opposition to us, because you say, "I voted against it because," but you don't say why we voted for it.
Oh, no, that's all well and good, Ernie, I think. Rather, I don't want to get into the details of this because it's, that's not the agenda item. The question is, you know, to give direction to staff about what we want included in this document, and then we can have that argument later.
That's fine.
So how about at one of your January meetings, I come back with a staff report with, you know, to talk about this, this list, and that will be our first step, and so from...
And hopefully you'll have gotten some input from us as to other things that we need, we think need to be included, and maybe it's in a, maybe it's part of the outline or maybe it's detail that will go into some other subject.
Exactly, and so...
Any thoughts that anybody's got? Don't share them with each other, just please forward them to Elaine.
Yeah, and that also doesn't preclude at whatever January meeting we identify on the agenda, if, you know, if something comes to you at that particular meeting you want to add or subtract...
Yeah.
You can do it then as well.
Absolutely.
So from now through that meeting, yes.
I'm just trying to give you some additional information to make it easier to, okay, well, I heard this subject from four of you. I heard this subject from only one, and everybody feels the opposite way, so, you know, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of a starting basis in addition to the information that Sarah's already provided. Is everybody good with that?
I think she provided a great foundation, now we just work on it, that's all.
No, she, well, she's actually got more information than just, than what was presented here, so it's, I think it's all good. I just wanted to make sure that we had consensus that we're gonna move forward in this general direction, and the details shall either be agreed to or fought over later.
Okay.
So with that, we will move to, thank you, Sarah. We will move to city manager report.
Hello, everyone. Want to lead off by just thanking the thousands of volunteers and participants and our veterans and our amazing city staff employees who made yesterday's Veterans, 19th Annual Veterans' Day Parade another astonishing success. Was out there, thoroughly enjoyed every minute, and was, was so proud of our city. So thank you to everyone. Folsom residents who see smoke coming from manhole lids and sidewalk cracks should not be concerned. The city of Folsom will be testing portions of the sewer lines using a non-toxic artificial smoke substance. Smoke tests are planned in the vicinity of East Bidwell Street, Riley Street, and Montrose Drive. The smoke is non-toxic, leaves no residue, and is generally harmless to humans, pets, foods, and material items. And for more information, you can contact our environmental and water resources department at 916-461-6162, or at www.folsom.ca.us/smoketesting.
It's only a problem if the smoke ends up inside your house. That lead, that is, basically means there's a plumbing problem.
That means that, yeah, yeah, but that's, that's how we test the lines.
So if that happens, please don't post it on Facebook, call the city.
Yeah, good point. The Folsom Zoo Sanctuary is hosting its annual Thanksgiving feast for the animals, so join the festive atmosphere and enjoy watching the animals receive specially-prepared Thanksgiving treats and meals starting at 11:00 a.m. on Thanksgiving, Thursday, November 28th. Regular admission fees apply. Visit www.folsom.ca.us for more details. Lace up your skates and enjoy the holiday magic at the Folsom Historic District ice rink. Folsom's beloved ice rink encircles the historic railroad turntable and a tall decorated Christmas tree. The Folsom Ice Rink is open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., including on Christmas Day. Learn more at folsomeicrink.com. Very proud to share that KCRA reported last week that Folsom was ranked as the safest city in the Sacramento region in a new study by SafeWise. The annual report ranks cities based on the number of violent crimes and property crimes per 1,000 people living in a city. Help protect and enhance the historic and cultural character of Folsom's treasured historic district. Residents, historic preservationists, and business owners in the Folsom Historic District are encouraged to apply for the Historic District Commission. There are three open seats on the seven-member commission, and applications are due by November 23rd, and you can find out more at our website, specifically on our commissions and committees webpage. The popular Wild Nights and Holiday Lights at the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary returns for its 10th year with even more seasonal cheer. Thousands of bright and colorful lights, sparkling ornaments and trees, lighted animal figures, and displays will transform the zoo sanctuary. Wild Nights and Holiday Lights is open from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. December 6th and 7th, December 13th through 23rd, and December 26th through 30th, and all the proceeds of that event go to the zoo sanctuary animals. Help make the season bright for local families in need by donating to the annual Christmas Toy Drive. The citizens assisting public safety volunteers in partnership with our very own police and fire departments and the Folsom Police Foundation are collecting items for the annual toy drive, and here are two specific ways you can help. Number one, you can select an ornament from the trees in the lobby of either the police department or the fire department, Fire Department Station 35, to fill the specific wish of a child, or you can bring a gift of your choosing for a child, teen, or adult. New opened and unwrapped toys, as well as new clothing or gift cards, can be dropped off at the Folsom Police Department or at the Folsom Fire Department Station, number 35, between 7:00 and 4:00. And finally, we had a successful public open house on our proposed utility rate increases last week on Wednesday, November 6th. We discussed the rate study process and proposed rates, we answered questions, and a video of the meeting can be found at folsom.ca.us/utilityrates, and the council will hold its public hearing on the proposed rate increases on December 10th at 6:30, right here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ernie?
Okay, let's see if I get through this. First of all, I want to reiterate what Elaine said about the parade. This is my 17th out of the 19th that we had parades, and the numbers that I saw, we predicted about 2,700 were going to show up. I'm sure the 3,000 showed up, because some of them groups that came by the reviewing stand were enormous, bigger than I, they filled the whole street, and we haven't had that before. And so it was amazing. I want to point out Ted O'Campbell, who is a manager in running this, he's the key man, and all the FAA and the veterans organizations have a committee that put that together. And I think I can especially thank Jack Baker, part of the FAA, him and my son as a carrier. Jack organized the food that we fed about 2,300 of those 3,000. There was no food left at the end of the parade, I can tell you, it was all gone. So it was great, and the kids and the diversity that we saw in that parade. I never saw so many cars and motorcycles in my life. I mean, we could open up an auto mall if we wanted to, it was fantastic, and I happened to ride in one, I guess I didn't realize it was so unique, because everybody was saying, "What were you in?" And I guess they called it a Barracuda. It's American Motors 68 year, and there was two of them. My son rode in another one because they only seat one passenger.
I think it's a distant cousin of the Gremlin.
I don't know what they called it, but it was a very nice, nice ride, and it worked good. I asked him, "We're gonna be going slow, are you sure you're not gonna clunk out in the middle of the road?" And he said he did one in Orangeville, and it works fine, too, and it did, it worked real fine. So I, again, duplicate the manager's remarks about, "Thank you, Folsom. You came out, and as a veteran, we say thank you to you." Now, a second item, the opposite of the attitude. A little project that I'm going through right now knocked my eyes again. I thought I got rid of that two years ago, and it's back. So I used my Sherlock Holmes spy glasses to be sure I can read what I write. So I wrote a little article I want to discuss. Couple hours before we came to this city council tonight, Councilman Roger Gaylord and myself had a very pleasant, frank, non-hostile conversation on a post that he did, and it was just a difference of opinion, and it is, you got two people, you're gonna have differences of opinion. So I just want to carry that a little further and support Roger in one way and not support him in another way. So if you, with your permission, Mayor, I want to read this as best I can.
I only want to remind everybody that this is your comments...
That's great.
And it's not the opportunity for a debate...
Nope.
...about items that are not on the agenda.
Nope.
Okay. As long as it doesn't turn into that...
But tell me to stop.
I won't have to take your Sherlock Holmes magnifying glass away.
Then I'm lost, you take it away, I'm dead. Okay. Okay. Tonight I want to, I would like the council and senior staff to consider, we call, a special assessment, or a special session to consider the city's position on homelessness in our town. And this needs to be placed on the agenda as a public meeting on homelessness, and is documented totally, not paraphrased, I want exactly what we say, not summarized. This needs to be, first, this needs to establish, why am I gonna, I'm gonna try to read the word? Basically, what I want to do, I want this, I want this city council to form a position, on the city's position, on the, how we're gonna handle homelessness in this town. We have a lot of individual ideas, and Roger posted on this saying that he was the only one that was concerned. I can tell you, me and my son spent hours researching homelessness all over the United States as to what has worked and what has not worked. There are things that work and things that don't work, and the cost of this is enormous, okay? And you can see this, just read the paper Sunday on the article on Sacramento, you see how much money is involved. Money shouldn't stop us, but it has to be considered. Well, Roger made a post that, that he, that I disagreed with him on. He tied together homelessness and economic, low-income housing. Low-income housing is not homeless housing, there's a distinction.
Ernie, are you talking about affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay, because, just as a reminder, that's a, there's a technical definition, it's called affordable housing.
Okay, affordable housing, okay, I'll use that term rather than low-income. Affordable housing is for the many, many, many people that work for this town that do things for us, that service us as individuals, that they can't afford to buy a house. I heard on the TV today, my son related that our average home in the area is over $600,000, and it takes an income, family income of $126,000 to qualify for that home. That, we have a lot of people that do a great service to us, but they can't afford it, and we have to find a way to get those young people, the entry-level people, people starting up that just working real hard, they just don't make that kind of money to buy our 600,000, 800,000 dollar homes. That's the affordable housing, that's not homeless housing. Now, I can assure you, I've been working for 11 years on this con... you, I've been working for 11 years on this council, to get more and more affordable housing, even through the recession, so we have to be careful, because when the affordable housing people prepare and implement, they vet people very hard, they look at their people to be sure that they're, be a good citizen within the thing, when we take a homeless person out of the woods, and try to be, befriend him, clean him up, give him a shave, cut his hair, and bring him a nice set of clothes, it does not negate the record that he's established prior, and if he has a criminal record, you cannot expect it to be integrated initially into affordable housing, affordable housing is expensive, you, we've got to be sure the people going in there are going to be good citizens, we don't know that yet, we're going to try to bring the homeless person back up to where he was, we hoped before, but these not instances, now you say, okay, we're talking transition housing, the same thing, you can drop a homeless group in the middle of a, of a street, of people that earned their house without some risk, so you got to be careful, but, and I also think this, I would advocate if the mayor puts it on the agenda, and Roger wants it, and I support him, that he should have it on, and be able to speak to it.
Ernie, what's your, what's your request, to discuss homelessness, or to discuss affordable housing?
Discuss homelessness, but affordable housing would come in, because people mix it up, they think homelessness should be used in the affordable housing, you cannot do that.
It's not the same discussion, it would have to be two separate discussions, are you asking for one or both?
One, to tie them together, you can talk about it both times, you can, you can talk about it, because right now Roger seems to think that we can use some, some spaces in the, in the affordable housing apartments to house certain people from the homeless society, it's not ready, I'm, you know, if we're going to be effective, and we're going to solve some problems for these people, we're not going to be liked by a lot of people in this town, they're going to call us mean, and heartless, and just a bad person, but if our method works, and nothing in the United States has worked yet for other than two years, if our method works, then we're going to put the people on the right track to become back into the citizenship, those that want to be, if the guys don't want to be, then we have to enforce the rules that says you are not allowed to ignore our code and laws, you're going to have to abide by them.
So, Ernie, I'm going, I'm going to ask that question again, so do you want to have, do you want to have an item that explains the difference between affordable housing?
What I would like to do is defer this now, since I talked to Roger, and let Roger make the proposal to you, if he wants to have this agenda, if he doesn't, then I will do it, the agenda item to discuss the city council position on homeless as a policy, because I watch Facebook, and everybody's got some other idea, okay, and I think we need this council to say what is the idea for the city, okay, now Roger has an idea that he wants to...
Okay, but, but again, we can't, this is not an agendized item, so we're not going to have a debate about it.
No, it's not a debate.
There's no debate, listen, my post didn't indicate that the council doesn't care about homelessness, and that I'm the only one who does, my post indicated that homelessness hasn't been addressed by the council on the agenda, so that's, there's a clear distinction with that, so what Ernie's suggesting, or commenting on is a post where, we know, I've had some discussions internally with trying to figure out how we can find a solution, our in-game, not in-game, but our, our response when asked as, as a city, as a council, as individual council members, of what our, our answer is, how do we address homelessness, it's through HEART and our faith-based community, but HEART itself is underfunded and understaffed, they do a great job, my goal on the post was to, and this is where the agenda item I'd like to bring forward, which is premature right now, because I'm still putting, putting it together, is looking at a way of utilizing our in lieu affordable housing fund to help transitional housing through HEART, and so...
Well, just, just a point of clarification, it's not our in lieu affordable housing fund.
If I could just finish.
It's the Housing Trust Fund, it's, it has a specific name.
Okay, the Housing Trust Fund, but it's, it's a fund developed by developers opting to pay in lieu fees instead of building affordable housing, so we, the city attorney of I, the city manager and I have had some discussions on it, and that's what I had posted about it, to get feedback on, on that base, so, that being said, these people is a term I can't stand, it's humans unhoused or housed, I mean, it doesn't really matter, there's an issue in the city, there's an issue in California, and we have to look at it holistically, some people can shake their heads, and some people can deny the fact that there, there are options for some, and there are people willing to do it, but they need help to do it, so that's, that's what I, I wanted to bring forward with the council, to discuss that, and, you know, I'm happy to format that in an email request, as opposed to asking for it right now.
I don't, I don't need to have it by email, I'll be happy to talk to Elaine, and we'll come up with an agenda item, like, that in my personal opinion, needs to be an explanation of what the city's role has been up to this point, and an explanation of what the city can and cannot do, and then we move forward from there and have a discussion in public, and the council members can, can add some input, and we'll see where we, we'll, we'll see if that gets us any further down the road.
So, I just want to, for clarity purposes, council member Sheldon, are you, are you looking for an item to discuss the use of Housing Trust Fund dollars for housing those who are experiencing homeless, homelessness?
That's why I said it should come from me, because it's not, it's not that simple, it's, it's allowing programs such as HEART to utilize those funds to...
But, no, but I'm just going to put, the agenda item is going to be more, more broad than that.
Yep.
And the discussion is, you know, we're going to get an explanation from staff about what has happened up to this point, the data that leads up to it, the homeless issue, the definition of affordable housing, because there's a clear, a clear distinction, we can talk about homelessness and affordable housing in one conversation, but this is not going to be a specific proposal that is, is based on, on a specific request that's looking at a very narrow sliver, I think what the council probably needs to do, and I'm hoping that you agree with me, based on the comments that both council members, Sheldon and, and you just made, that we need to talk about those issues, we need to have a public discussion, we need to let the public weigh in on what they think about it, and we'll see what, if any, change in position the city has, and we'll move forward from there.
I'm, I'm okay with that, and I agree with it, but one thing I don't want to happen is when I brought forward a direct-elect mayor initiative, it, it was basically lambasted on this council, because it wasn't fully baked or completely detailed, when I wanted a general discussion on the topic, so everyone up here killed it, literally killed it, when I, all I wanted was a clear indication, almost like exactly what Vice Mayor Quino's initiative is with the governor's handbook, was to get consensus and ideas, I wasn't granted that, with this topic, it's way more important, so I want to make sure that happens.
I'm sorry, Roger, you made your presentation, we disagreed with you, I'm sorry.
That wasn't the case, you, it was based, I didn't...
All right, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into arguments about stuff that happened six months ago, so, do you have anything else that you want to talk about in business from the floor?
Uh, yeah, airboard, thank you, Ernie, for bringing that up, and we did have a good discussion, so thank you, airboard meeting, reporting out, we did not vote on, or we did not pass the per capita fee, so that will not be happening, so everyone can rest assured that's money back in our pockets.
So how's the airboard going to fund itself if they don't have that funding?
It's going back to, because there was, there was other mechanisms, it was one of five, so now it's going to be taken back to understand what, if indeed, other elements, such as Measure A, or whatever else they could do to go back and look at funding resources, so, per capita fee is not one of those at this time, so, that's, that, and I just wanted...
That's, that's very interesting, because Measure A can't be used to fund positions at the, or quality of this report, it's only for projects, so...
I'm just telling you what was reported on, so...
I'd like to see the minutes from that meeting.
With that?
I'd like to see the minutes from that meeting.
Okay, the, I wanted to reiterate the fact that the Veterans Day Parade was amazing, and so thank you to everyone who helped put it on, and thank you to all of our veterans for their service, Ernie, thank you for your service, and you, you ride that car, was a, you look like you're in a drag race down this strip on, on the Toma Street, so that was pretty cool, but thank you to everyone who put it on, and with that, I'm good.
Mike?
First of all, it's hard to believe that two AMC Barracudas have survived for the last 51 years to make it to that parade, and to run back-to-back, that was pretty amazing. Couple things, I was the city's representative with the city clerk at the California League of Cities Annual Conference recently, and I just wanted to thank Elaine and our Community Development Director and the staff from Community Development, because our project that utilized the AB2 funds to improve the processing of development plans was highlighted in one of the sessions, and we got some nice publicity for the city of Folsom, because only seven projects had been approved and funded up until that point, and every city in the state of California had the opportunity to get that fund, so, way to be on top of things, thank you. The, at Secog, the, I think I mentioned this last time, but it bears repeating, the California Car Emissions Standards waiver that currently exists is being revoked by the administration in Washington as of November 26th, the, the waiver that, what it means is that California can have special car emission standards, separate from other states, or separate from federal requirements, and that's okay, a whole series of other funding that happens from the federal government and from the state of California is predicated on how you calculate those emissions, and when the waiver is taken away, the emission standard for California will cease to exist, so the calculation methodology will no longer be valid, in its absence, the idea was that the federal government would revert to the more common, the, the standard that is more commonly used in states in the United States, but that also does not have an actual calculation that is current and can be used for funding methodology, so, the waiver will go away, the California standard will no longer exist, the federal standard will not really exist, so for purposes of funding transportation projects primarily, there will not be a way for the state, for communities within the state of California to apply for funding, if you don't have an approved plan for the, Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the Sustainable Communities Strategy Plan, which, going on a normal path, we would have approved sometime during next year for Sacramento County's communities, we are having a special meeting on Monday, if anybody would like to come, at Secog, to approve that plan now, before the standards go away, so that they predate the, the removal of the waiver, and allow Sacramento County or the region to be able to apply for both federal and state funding, so, that was a long way to get to, there is a special Secog meeting on Monday, for the singular purpose of approving the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy in advance of that waiver retraction. On much happier note, I was the host for a Cub Scout meeting here at City Hall over the weekend, a bunch of wee blows from the area of Broadstone were here, and they had fantastic questions about how you become a city council person, how do you get these microphones to turn on, how can they help volunteer in the city, all the things that you might expect a 10 or 11-year-old boy to ask you, their parents, more thoughtfully, asked specifically about traffic safety in the city, and about the rate increases, so we actually spent a fair amount of time discussing that, and after discussing that, one of the kids said, "Hey, wait a minute, we have a sight distance problem near Goldridge, where the road curves, and people speed around the curve, and there's a crosswalk", so, in his absence, I will just put out there in the world that Dave should expect a finely crafted letter from a concerned 11-year-old that goes to Goldridge, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Sarah?
I will keep it short and sweet, not much happening with LAFCO, we had a meeting last week, presentation from the Regional Water Authority, but we don't have anything in December or January, so we won't meet again until February, 48 days ago, I pledged to visit 49 city parks in 49 days, so I have one day left, I have visited all 46 that are listed on the city's website and have pictures and stuff, but Lorraine, there are three more in this renovation plan that say they're existing parks, so I'm counting them, and I'm going to visit them tomorrow, and then I will hit 49 in 49 days, so, I can tell you that I have had a ball, I have been to parks that I have never been to, let alone heard of, I've been to some neighborhoods I've never been to, and I want to thank Lorraine and Tim O'Shea for their help in answering my questions, and certainly want to thank current and past Parks and Recreation Commissioners for leaving us this great inventory, but hats off to our Parks and Recreation Maintenance Staff, I've had the pleasure of meeting four of them, I saw Rick again for the second time the other day, and got to have a nice chat with him, but, you know, I said this before, that, you know, really, it's, it's our city staff who is interacting with the public on a regular basis, and I've just been really impressed with how clean the parks are, and I do, I check the bathrooms, and I look to make sure the garbage has been emptied and all that kind of stuff, and they're really, really in, in good shape, as far as cleanliness and all that kind of stuff, so, anyway, thank you, that's it.
Thanks to all the folks that participated, and particularly those that planned the parade over the weekend, great job, Lorraine, on the subject of Cullinworth, I had a conversation with Elaine about some issues at the community center, I was there over the weekend, so, if we could work on getting the ice maker fixed and getting that place a little bit more clean after events, and I know it's hard when, because we've got such a good rental history over there, but on Sunday, it was kind of a mess, the usual cautions about driving carefully, it's, the clocks have changed now, if you're going to be out walking at night, I don't even care if you're on the sidewalk, wear colors that people can see, the rules about stopping at stop signs and red lights apply to bicycles as well, and I think, I don't know, just in the last week, I've probably seen at least 10 bikes that didn't stop at a red light or a stop sign, so, we've already had, you know, some issues with fatalities, fatalities because of people making terrible choices while riding their bicycle, so, stop speeding, if you need to be there earlier, leave earlier, or be a couple minutes late, at least you'll arrive better late than ever, and with that, we will not be seeing anybody until early December, or at the Christmas Tree lighting, so, happy Thanksgiving to those of you who celebrate it, and we'll see you at the lighting of the Christmas tree in the Historic District, or wave while you're ice skating, that, we are adjourned at 8:37.